All right, it's 6:30 on November the 13th. Let the city of Grantville work session meeting come to order. Please stand for the invitation and pledge allegiance.
Father, Lord in heaven, Hallowed be thy name, our kingdom come. What have you done for our brother and sisters and husbands? Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. For he is not in that picture; but he will serve me for the life of the kingdom and the power of the Lord forever. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any citizens' comments on the agenda, Robby?
Yes, sir.
Motion. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
My motion is to
Spirit, would you please pull the light out a little bit?
Add an item. Add an item to the agenda to discuss assignment to the city clerk as the system administrator responsible for videotaping and publishing the video stream of all duly advertised meetings held in this council chambers and ensuring that video comments shall never be disabled, turned off, or deleted. And the second thing I would like to add to the agenda is to schedule a utility meeting, which is needed to discuss whether we need a forensic audit of our utility company. Two items I would like to add.
Do I have a motion on the first? You made the motion, do I have a second? Hearing none, that fails. Do I have a motion on the second? You made the motion, do I hear a second? Hearing none, that fails. Okay. All right, we've already approved the agenda. All in favor of the agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Mr. Gresham, will you take on the public hearing?
Yes, sir. This public hearing will be held on Monday, November the 20th, 2023, at 6:30, right here in the council chambers. The public hearing will be on the special use application by Mini Sewell Land LLC and LDO Coeida LLC for construction and operation of a sanitary sewer waste facility to be located on Mini Sewell Road in the city of Grantville. Once again, that public hearing will be next week, Monday, November the 20th, 2023, at 6:30 PM, prior or the first item at our city council regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. All right. Tonight is a work session. We are voting on nothing tonight, so everything is in discussion. So I'll take the discussion on special use permit to build a 5 million gallon per day sewage treatment plant in the city of Grantville. Grantville hasn't grown in 20 years, and it's hurting our city. It's causing our tax base to be flat. Things that the citizens wanted during my campaign as I went door to door, they won't grow. We've had impediments to growth. The first one was high-speed internet. That was solved in early part of this year. Secondly, we do have a few water issues, but those are being solved through capital projects. The biggest impediment we had to grow the Grantville was sewage capacity. We're basically at 92% with sludge ponds with 1950s dated technology. What we're going to be able to do, starting tonight, and then voted on next Monday night, is that there are plans to build an up to 5 million gallon per day sewage treatment facility on what we term the Mini Sewell property, which is 500 acres. That property is currently owned by Chip and Frank Barrett. On January the 5th, ongoing is plans. You never know till a real estate deal closes. That property will be acquired, and I'm just going to, basically it's Brenton Company, Brett Scarborough. They will have all 500 acres. They plan to build this sewage treatment facility along with the piping necessary to handle all of Grantville and on some other surrounding areas on this property. This will be done at no cost to Grantville. Once it is complete, the facility, and I'll let them correct me if I said anything wrong, will be taken over by Cowie County Water and Sewer. All right? So that Grantville will also, we've already turned the management of our water and sewer over to Cowie County. We will simply extend that, but they will now take over our county water and sewer business. This is a huge step for Grantville, probably the biggest news in 40, maybe 50 years that will allow us to start developing commercially, getting businesses, as well as residential development, which we so need. Jay, Rick, and Richard, did I see you in the back?
Yes, sir.
Can you all come up to the podium, please? Let's just get you all up here at once. So Rick, Rick and Jay Born are with Cowie County Water and Sewer, and Mr. Richard Ferry is with, I guess we'll just call it Brenton Company for short of a
Yeah, it's Brentholdings.
Brentholdings. All right. So I'm going to open the discussion up to the council at this point. So please, if you'd like to speak, ask me, and I'll let you go.
I'll start.
Go ahead.
Y'all, appreciate y'all letting us have this opportunity to come and present this condition of use permit. Is that what it's called?
Yeah, let me clarify one thing. I'm sorry. What we're going to be voting on is not a zoning change. It's a special use permit. The property that this treatment plant is going on is Zone R20. Building that plant is allowed with a special use permit. So this doesn't require zoning changes. It has already been advertised. The sign's already up. And just for clarification, planning and zoning on Monday, voted unanimously to approve this project.
All right, great, thank you. So again, thank y'all for letting us have this opportunity.
Excuse me, one second, I have a question. Would you please, can we move that board right there? Because I can't see the, um, would you mind just bringing it down to the floor? Because I can't see the council members.
Okay, just show it to them, and then in order to have this with the council, we'll be able to, so we can identify where it's from.
Should I put it here?
Okay.
That's great, thank you so much.
So again, thank y'all for the opportunity to present this condition of use permit in front of y'all. So we, as Brentholdings, have a contract on the piece of property in question. And we don't have any long-term plans established for it. However, we realize that in the process, while we were going through the RDU diligence, that using that property to its best use would require a sewer improvement to the city of Grantville. And so we met with y'all a long time ago and started talking about the options that were available and realizing that the best option would be a combination of bringing in Cowie County Water and Sewer and working out a solution with the city. And so that was the impetus of this discussion. And so from what I understand from the zoning authority of the city, this condition of use permit, if approved, would only grant the authority to build a sewer plant. We're not making any application for a residential plan, an industrial plan, or anything at this time. The first step would indeed be what you all are looking at here. And I think in reality, whether this, whether a future residential or industrial development occurs on this property, the idea of a sewer treatment plant for the city of Grantville is something that needs to be discussed and planned for. And of course, Rick and Jay would know significantly more about that than I do, and of course, you know more than I do. But this was the first step, just making the application for a condition of use permit. And so that's me as the developer and the company that has the contract on the property. Of course, Rick and Jay can discuss the sewer side of it and the business of that. And I think, Mayor, everything you said is in line with our discussions.
Okay. All right. Why don't y'all step up? You're in the way of the camera, too, so.
There's so many places to stand.
Okay.
So I'll answer any questions I can for you. As we said last week, basically, we kind of got brought in because, one, as the mayor said, we're maintaining the sewer system and some of the water systems at this point for Grantville. We realize, I think it's been a long-term issue with some of the ponds, the system you currently have. Really, the only way to fix that is to do something with the plant. It's kind of worked out that with Brett and his group, I guess, in terms of purchasing this land, one of the things we did was went ahead and looked or applied to the state for a wasteload application, which is one of the first things. It's not the first thing you've got to do to be able to build a plant, have a discharge point. We did that, what, eight months ago? Six, eight months ago, maybe longer than that. We do have that. It does allow us to go from 1 MGD, or a million gallons a day, up to 5 million gallons a day currently. That can change, you know, depending on how long it takes to get there. But it's a start. I don't think we haven't hit some, building a 5 MGD plant to start with, but somewhere along the lines of probably a million to two million is what you're going to see, you know, initially. But it will allow growth for whatever does happen in the future. What else?
That was it. I mean, I was just going to add, you said build a 5 MGD plant, but
Up to.
Up to. That's the only thing I heard that might need to be, have a little bit of clarification. But other than that, we're kind of here to answer any questions that may relate to this. I mean, of course, it'll have some immediate needs that Grantville has, and then it'll be room to grow in the future as Grantville decides to do that.
Okay. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Gresham, you have a question.
What impact will this have on our budget? The city's budget?
Zero.
Who is financing this? This treatment? Who's financing it?
Sure, I, ma'am, I can, I could help with that. We don't have a, we don't have, we haven't really planned out the exact method of doing it. It would be a combination of our interaction with the Water and Sewer Authority to build the plant, not necessarily, I would assume, of course, Grantville would be a part of the discussion, but the financing and the funding of it would be more of a developer and the Water and Sewer Authority discussion, not one that would involve funds of the city of Grantville.
Okay, so it's going to benefit Grantville, but there's likely to be any cost to Grantville? Is this a gift, or, I understand?
Right. Yeah, it's a fair question, though. What you're asking is, in turn, we were always looking for ways to improve community, but also to better the property and better the area. So we recognize that Brentholdings has several other holdings in Grantville, in and around Grantville. And we want to find a way to use those properties as well. In the current situation of Grantville Sewer, there is a, there is a lack of capacity and treatment ability within the city. So I think what we'd end up doing is we'd enter into an agreement with the Water and Sewer Authority to build the plant and not necessarily gift it to Grantville. But in all of the developments we do, our infrastructure does get turned over to an authority, whether it's the Water and Sewer Authority, the city of Grantville, or whoever the other jurisdictions we're working with. And whether you call it a gift or that's just part of your development regulations, how we manage it. But we would develop this in working with the Water and Sewer Authority, not with Grantville.
So this is being planned for future development to have the sewer capacity?
Yes.
To future development? Will it begin Grantville as a development?
Ours is. I don't know what the Water and Sewer Authority's plans are outside, if there would be even ability to do that, but Grantville would have the ability to allow development to occur within the city itself and make those choices, other choices as well.
Okay, and what's the timeline for having this built? Are you ready to go?
Um, you can help a little bit with that. I don't know. That's where these guys are coming with the funds.
Typically, you're probably looking at a minimum of about two years, probably closer to three between design and actual build. By the time you bid it out, get through that process and have it built, probably three years.
And this is involving Coeida County, Meriwether County, those two counties? Is that, is it going to be located within those two counties? Coeida and Meriwether?
Well, the exact location, correct me if I'm wrong, I think some of that property is in Meriwether. But the exact location on that property has not been determined yet. We know that it's going to be on there. At least, that's the plan. But we haven't, I guess, nailed down the exact spot for it on yet. We have a pretty good idea where we'd like to have it.
So what's the, ma'am, would we have to annex any property to be able to utilize?
So do me a favor. Why don't you lift up the board? We're going to cut you off for just a minute there. And point to the property where this is going. It's right there in the corner, the yellow one. And it's roughly way down there toward Yellowjacket Creek. It's already in the city of Grantville.
I believe that's the line she would refer to.
Yes, so there's a county line, but that property is all of the city of Grantville. We don't have to annex anything.
The annexation has been completed.
Several years ago. All right.
And we've done the impact report, right?
Impact on what?
The impact on the community.
There's no community down there. It's all rural land.
So there's no negative impact?
There's nothing around it. There might be one farmhouse somewhere. I mean, roads will have to be cut in there. I mean, this is, we're talking some prime deer hunting land. I guess we're going to mess up, but yeah. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions?
So the agreement between the county and the city that we already voted on, we will amend that once this is voted on and all that?
Potentially, yes. That's kind of the plan. And it'll come after a wise addition to the development here.
So with our current capacity, with our population, how many more could we grow to if, you know, this was built? I mean, what's the?
So Jay did a, in planning and zoning, this question came up. So we did a 1 million gallon a day, I think, calculation, right? What were the, just for houses, let's not talk commercial. What did we come up with?
I think it was 3,300 homes, right?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact number, but you can forget that based on what our plan is.
All right, it's roughly 3,300.
3,300, 3,500 for a 1 million gallon a day.
So we're talking, what, five times the capacity now?
Oh, yeah.
Up to 3,000.
Oh, yeah, all right. Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gresham?
Yes, sir. The next item on the work session agenda is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-21 to rezone parcel identification number GO50008016, pardon me, and GO5008015 located on Roger Arnold Road from R20 Single Residence to General Commercial GC. This was approved by the Planning Commission. This property is the application for rezoning, comes from Jim Sales, and it is to build an office and workshop, storage for real estate management and repair business. So as I said, it was approved by the Planning Commission, and the public hearing will be held on December the 18th, 2023. That will be the night in December that we vote on adoption of ordinance number 2023-21. Mr. Sales is in the audience and prepared to answer any questions you might have.
All right, so first thing, I think, again, if you can manage this, Jim, or if you need help, maybe you could come over and help me. Hold up the map here. And could you, Bishop, could you hold up the map and point out, Jim, where this property is for the council?
Yes. The property is right here. This is five acres, it's three parcels. And then right beside it is one acre. And right beside that is 1.4 acres. It's on your sheet, but I can't remember exactly. It's not a round number. So we're looking at a total of 7, 7.4 acres.
Could you also point out any of the properties around that that you currently own?
Yeah, I own quite a few around that. Right here, I own this, this five, five or six acre park connected up against a commercial. I own across the street here, this three acre parcel. I own the parcel next to it. And then there's one here I don't own. And then I own this parcel over here.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bishop. Put that down. Okay. And just also briefly explain, you're moving your business there. Why are you moving your business? And what's the impact for your current business on 29?
Yes, I need storage space. We don't, and what I tell you, I have a 22-year history of doing what I'm talking about here. So we don't manufacture anything. We store a lot of material to save us from going to the hardware store, plumbing store. We store a lot of material, and we never have enough storage space. I do, I do need an office. The online system has really reduced the amount of walk-in traffic we have. So I would like to build, I would like to build a 60 by 150-foot building. And I'm familiar and have built aircraft hangars recently. This will be a first-class building. It will cost roughly a half million dollars. All that space, except for a small 80-year-old house on one side, has been vacant for many years. So this, I'm so sorry. This, this 60 by 150 will allow me to have the first 30 feet for my office. That will give us bathrooms and people to talk on the phone. We have three people on the phone all day managing rentals. But again, there's very little walk-in traffic. And the storage, I, we don't do anything after 5:00. We don't do anything on the weekend. And other than my three people in the office, that's the only people that will be there all day. In the morning, my crew comes in, they pick up material. We do what we call a morning huddle. We make our assignments for the day based on work orders. And then we're out in the field. I mean, y'all see our vehicles all over town all the time, and they're going all over the county. So the point being, this would be very unintrusive to that area. The half-million-dollar building, the improvements will certainly help the tax revenue. And also, it's time, Grantville is, you know, I owned all of downtown, and I've sold it all. And I've recently sold the church. So I don't own a commercial building downtown. And all I have left commercially is the Highway 29 property. And I own that whole block from Long Oak Road on 29 over to Holt's Block. And, you know, it's, it's old. It's this short of being an eyesore. So the goal, and now is the time to do it, is to move and tear all that down. I don't need downtown access. I don't need highway access. I just need a place for us to store our material and also to have our office mostly talk on the phone. So my goal is to move. Right now, we're using all that on Highway 29 for the shop and storage. So if you drive by at 8:30 in the morning, there's six to eight trucks out there. And then there's, there's one there the rest of the day, or a few vehicles that aren't being used on a daily basis. But there's nobody there during the day. Doesn't mean somebody doesn't show up to pick up some material, but as a rule, this is very unintrusive. But the goal is to level that. We lost the Dollar Store. He didn't have quite enough room, and he needed some dirt. So we ultimately lost that because they couldn't make that up. And I don't have any commercial plans. I'm really not interested in the Dollar Store, but I am interested in leveling that and putting something there that needs highway access, walk-in access, and getting rid of all the old buildings that are there. And then, of course, building us something that will work out better to serve our needs. And again, the planning and zoning did vote unanimously to do that. I've got a letter here from one of, I was only able to get a hold of one of the two neighbors. It would be inconvenient. So I've got a letter here from him saying he has no objection to us zoning it commercial. So I'm hoping that I can move out of the church and move out of 29 and then have an appropriate facility for us and level what we have on Highway 29. That's the plan.
All right. Discussion, questions?
Mr. Mayor, this item is the first reading of an ordinance, and I don't send ordinance in my package.
It hasn't been prepared yet. I'll have it, there's no vote taken on it. It would only be a first reading, but I'll have that before your meeting next Monday.
Okay, other questions? Questions? Okay, Jim, take your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Gresham?
Yes, sir. The next item on the work session agenda is discussion of the first reading of ordinance number 2023-22 to rezone parcel GO8224705 located on Clarence McCamery Road for Rural Development to GC, General Commercial. This was approved by the Planning Commission. The applicant, applicants are James and Yvonne Hand. The public hearing on this rezoning will also be on December the 18th. They asked for a rezoning for the future use of this property for their established business, parking for storage, detailing, sales, and mechanical, and bodywork. And it's my understanding that's on heavy trucks. They are with us tonight and able to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Questions?
Well, let me just do one quick thing. Well, let me just do one quick thing, just for the council's sake. We'll do it again.
Okay.
Pick up the board and show where this property is. It's right with the red, right where the interstate is.
Yep, here's the interstate.
There's the interstate, and then you're right there.
Yeah, so we're, it's right in here, actually.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, so it's the one you're.
Okay, all right. Questions?
And these are some of our new business owners.
Yes.
And we welcome them to Grantville.
Thank you.
It's, it's nice that they are growing their business, which obviously is helpful for Grantville.
Yes, sir. All right, question?
Could you tell us a little bit about your business?
So, our business is, we, we actually have three different businesses. But the main one is going to be for truck parking, such, but this is not to individuals. This is truck parking for larger companies, such as companies that make big trucks, such as International, which is known as Navistar is their corporate name. They bring trucks in when there's an overstock, and we store them here in the Atlanta area, where the, they're southeastern, where the place where they store them. Until the trucks are ready to leave, whether they've been sold to like larger companies, and then we just get them ready. And by getting them ready, it might be a quick PM service, a ransom, nothing, we don't touch them. And then, they just leave. And they'll come in, drivers will come in, pick them up, and take them out. So, we don't have a lot of traffic, but when they come in, they kind of come in quick, and we might get, you know, 10 or 20. And then, when they leave, they'll leave out the same way.
But they're scheduled in and scheduled out?
Yes, it's always scheduled. We don't, we don't accept deliveries on the weekend or in the evenings. Occasionally, we'll have one, you know, kind of pop up there, but normally, we do not. So, that's basically what we do.
And buy and sell equipment and trucks?
Yes. Well, that's with our heavy yellow equipment.
And this is the property that's out by the interstate, that when I'm going down the interstate, I see the property right there.
Yes, and you probably see a lot of trucks and yellow equipment.
It's a butt's up to Robert Allen.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm saying that you can't see it coming down 29, you seriously see it when you're going down the interstate.
Correct, correct.
Other questions? Any? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And again, I will tell the mayor and council, this was approved by the Planning Commission. The next item on our agenda is discussion on the acceptance of the resignation of Councilmember Alan Wegeser, who held post four. I think our city attorney has told us that we need to accept the resignation to make it official.
That is correct. In order to make the resignation official, the council needs to take some action to accept it. So, it'd just be a motion, second vote to accept the resignation.
Which we will do at the next council meeting.
And uh, moving on.
Yeah, next one. Okay. While we're on this, I want to also state to all of Grantville people out there, the process we are currently under to fill this position, obviously, is going to come before the city council for a vote for those people. We're putting out there and have put out there that anyone who is interested in taking that spot, or if you want to nominate someone, you need to inform them of this. They will need to come down to City Hall. They will need to fill out the same paperwork as if they are running for this position. Now, there'll be no charges, not to pay for anything. But this position has got to be vetted. We can't appoint someone if they don't meet qualifications, like, do they live in Grantville? Do they? So, we are going into that, that they'll come down and fill out that information to be vetted. Robbie, I believe we said we are taking those until December the 4th at noon, or close of business, correct? Okay, and then, what will happen is, on work session on December the 11th, anybody who has stepped up to want to take that on, we're going to have a session, let them come for us for five minutes, state why they think they want to be a councilperson. And then, on the 18th, we will actually have our closed ballot voting for this position. And at that point, the winner will be sworn in on that day, and will take their seat on the 18th. All right? Any questions?
My only question is, when was this process formulated?
About four days after Wegeser, Mr. Wegeser turned in his resignation letter.
And who was involved in that decision?
It was a decision between the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk, and myself.
Okay, this seems a bit unusual, that the city council was not involved in that.
That was mainly because the city council will vote on the applicants, and we wanted to keep them pure so that they could not show any favoritism for any of the applicants.
I mean, the process. I'm talking about the applicants. I'm talking about the process that would be followed in filling the vacancy. I believe the last time this happened, it was even discussed of maybe the next highest vote getter, the last election would be considered. So, it was part, there was a discussion that the city council was involved with, is how the process, what process would be followed.
Mr. Mitchell, would you please look up how we select this person? Because it's a vote, it's not a decision, it's a vote. I should have forwarded you to have that ready.
The charter states a vacancy shall exist if the mayor or councilman resigns, dies, moves his residence from the city, has been continuously disabled for a period of six months so as to prevent him from discharging the duties of his office or is convicted of a felony in office, a felony of violation of this act or violation of the election laws of the state. The council shall appoint a qualified person to fill such vacancy until the next election.
Okay. So, in order to have him qualified, we're going to have to vet.
That's, that's, that's the process.
Right.
They have to be vetted.
Yep, okay.
Tuesday, December the 5th, at noon.
Okay, so December 5th at noon, all right.
The next item on your agenda, mayor and council, is discussion on the Electric Cities of Georgia Fiscal Year 2023 Year End Settlement and Contract Payment Reimbursement. The Electric Cities of Georgia has notified us that their year-end settlement refund for the city of Grantville is $2,849.98. The fiscal year 23 contract payment reimbursement applicable to the city of Grantville is $198.10. Therefore, the total is $3,048.08. We recommend that we get these monies refunded to us via a check
And, and what will we do with that check?
We will deposit it in the general fund where we pay for Electric Cities of Georgia.
All right, questions?
This is the same option we normally choose also, right?
Yes, ma'am. Because we don't use the Training and Development Fund or education, nor do we get a credit on our bill, because that would skew the bill. So, we just deposit the money where we take it from.
Okay, questions?
What was that total again? What was that total balance?
Just a minute, please. Yes, $3,048.08.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
The next item, Mr. Mayor, is discussion on the MEAD power election for off-system sales margins and voluntary deposits into the municipal competitive trust flexible operating account short-term portfolio. Once again, this is our annual election, and we put the money that we receive, we put 100% in our flexible operating account short-term portfolio. This is what we title our rainy day fund. Should we have a disaster, we have money in the municipal competitive trust to assist us in our recovery. We do not know how much it will be, but we will put 100% in our flexible operating account short-term portfolio, which gives us the greatest flexibility to use the money on short notice.
Okay, questions?
The next item, Mr. Mayor, is discussion on the application for a special event permit for the Grantville Christmas parade on Saturday, December the 2nd, 2023. Our recreation, parks, recreation, and special events supervisor, Shelley Smith, is in charge.
Okay.
We recommend approval.
Questions?
At this point, it sounds to me that I'm happy to see that our recreation department is up and running and taking charge.
Okay. All right. Next.
The next item for your consideration is discussion on the first reading of Ordinance Number 2023-23, establishing a nighttime juvenile curfew. And I will let the city attorney and councilmember Clark discuss that as it's in their wheelhouse.
Mr. Mayor, council, councilmember Clark had requested that we look at an option for adopting a curfew ordinance and looking at what he had presented as a proposal. The city currently has a curfew ordinance already in place. I spoke with councilmember Clark this evening before the meeting. I'd like an opportunity to talk to Chief Whitlock before we proceed with this to find out what's not working about the current ordinance that's in place. Councilmember Clark gave me a few ideas, but I want to make sure that what we, since we do have something already in place, I think we can address this by a revision to the existing ordinance. And I want to make sure that we do that in the manner that meets the needs and accomplishes whatever needs to be done to accomplish, to make it effective for the police department. So, if I could have that opportunity to talk with the chief about that and then present a proposal for your consideration.
Okay, council clerk?
Yeah, I mean, like you were saying, it just, the biggest thing that, to, to me is that a 17-year-old shouldn't have the same curfew as a 12-year-old. That's what, you know, that's one of the major things that, I mean, ages need to be taken into consideration. You know, as far as that goes, that's, you know, we can like work that out from there.
Okay. Questions?
I just have one question. This definition of a parent means birth parent, adoptive parent, and stepparent. How about foster parents? It doesn't mention foster parents, if this is considered in this definition. This is a draft of, is this another city's draft?
Yes, I've worked on several other cities.
So, that's my only, that's all I noticed.
Well, we probably, probably should consider adding that.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely. The only thing I'd consider there.
You know, that has my custody given from the state.
Correct.
Should be on there.
So, maybe that would be the best line, which is fostering and custody with the state. Because I'm guessing there could be other circumstances, so, okay.
Do we have any businesses that have problems with juveniles?
Yes. It's not really that. It's a big problem, but there has been some left after clothing time. This is where all that came from. And our current curfew doesn't set a time for younger children at like 11 or 12 PM. And you really can't justify letting people drop off their kids and leave them at an establishment for like a babysitting, and then just, you know, not coming back and like getting them on time for like clothing.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, how, how do we speak?
Well, currently, our curfew, I believe, is 12 o'clock for anybody under 17. If we were to change the hours for different age groups, let's say someone 12-years-old gets dropped off from, and they're, you know, it's like 9:00, they gotta be home. But by then, our 12-year-olds should be out roaming the streets at 12:00 at night. I mean, you know, it's like staggered ages, I think it's 12 and under, 13 to 15, and then the 16 and 17.
So, if that does happen, the first step would be written, warning to the parent.
Yeah.
Followed by a certified letter. Then, the second offense would be $75 fine, and then they have to attend mandatory family counseling. The third offense would be $500 and mandatory community service.
Correct.
What about the fourth? Is that?
The chief, I'm going from there on the third. I mean, most people will get the message after the work the second time, I would expect.
The municipal court judge always has full latitude to implement any fine up to $1,000. So, even without further set-out penalties in there, there's still plenty of latitude for the municipal court judge based upon the circumstances of the situation.
Yeah, plus, I would think that eventually DFAS could get involved if it was continuing to be a, you know, like problem. I mean, you know, how would be, you know, for the court system to figure that out? I mean, what, you know, a child is left, and I supervised so many times, I'm sure. You know, the DFAS would be calling on that.
I think more of a problem that we have, and it's nationwide, is juveniles with weapons. So, we're going to be looking at something that would address that issue other than just being out after hours, juveniles with weapons going to school. That might be something that we can get start.
I, I think that would fall under the current state laws. I mean, there are already laws against someone bringing a weapon into school. That's not a rampant thing. We really don't have anything to enforce there. All right? Okay. Mr. Scherzer.
The next item on your work session agenda is discussion on resolution. Uh, next item on your work session agenda is discussion on resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five memorializing distinguished public service leaders John William Houston, councilman, and Emma Gladys Valhendon Warner, board president. That was suggested by council member Barry.
All right, Ms. Barry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this, this was initially presented on October the ninth, and hopefully we can, you know, approve this, I guess, at the next meeting when we are voting on things, because these two individuals have made outstanding contributions to our community. And hopefully that we will stay on top of this and that when we do have someone pass away that is associated with the city in some way, either a council member, and or a board president or any of the, any of the officers on our boards, that we will recognize them and their families to let them know that we really, really do appreciate everything that was done. So that's basically what I just wanted to emphasize, that we continue to do this as an ongoing thing.
Questions, discussion?
So like, what's the policy gonna be for, you know, what's like qualifications if we're gonna start naming buildings or pavilions or whatever after somebody?
Well, this, this particular, these two individuals are very active, you know, in getting funding and refurbishing the, the, the facility over on, at Griffin Park. So if in the future, we would like to, we have other facilities, we have other, that we could possibly, it would be something that might be coming forth from either the public, the Parks and Rec Commission or even directly from the city council, just a suggestion. But for these two individuals, it would seem fitting that it would be the Griffin Street Park, that that pavilion over there would be, we'd have a plaque up there to recognize their contribution.
I mean, I have no problem naming it, but, you know, we need a guideline, I would say, or some kind of way of always like determining who gets on there.
Yeah, what criteria, not that we're disagreeing with this, but what criteria in the future, so if we, we name the Griffin Street Pavilion after John and Miss Gladys, in the future, what criteria are we gonna put forth for the next council or county council whenever something happens?
Yeah, you know, as long as everybody.
To decide during the naming, whatever.
Yeah, as long as everyone from now follows the same policy or, you know, criteria or whatever, I'm for it, but, you know, if we're going to make a, an decision on it, it needs to be, is it how it always goes from now on out? You know, we can't be changing it for each person, you know, different.
We've done different things in the past, so maybe it wouldn't be a pavilion, maybe it would be a street.
But you're not just saying we need to, we need to figure out a criteria, what we're gonna say is the, so, so-and-so passed away, and what makes us wanna name something after? What, what do we need to put in writing so everybody else knows why we did it?
Yeah.
Or what we're gonna do in the future?
Also, we need to know, like, who nominated these people and also who makes the decision on, or like recommendation of, like, naming this street building, suite, whatever, after them.
Okay, but the next item that's coming up is a suggestion of having a plaque.
Okay, let's do this first, Ms. Barry. Hold on a second. So any more questions specifically on this?
On the page next.
Yes, okay, all right. So let's go ahead to the next one, Ms. Grishaver. I don't think we have to read it, 'cause it's, we're, we're basically have restated it just now. Okay.
Okay, this one is a resolution establishing a city policy for honoring and memorializing distinguished public service members. So with this resolution, the suggestion that I was making is that we have a memorial plaque to be placed with the name, their title and the dates of service, and it would be displayed within an appropriate city facility as determined by the city councils. So we would decide which facility we would have this plaque up. It might be City Hall, it might be one of the BPOS, but we just decide which, where we're gonna put this plaque. It's gonna have their name. So that's, we're in the future, we, you know, we have someone who passes away so that we don't totally forget them, that they'll, they'll be, you know, remembered for years to come. So that's a, this resolution. That's a suggestion. And hopefully, you know, when it comes time to vote, that we will get a second.
So I'll ask you a question. The only question on that, I understand elected officials, that, that has a specific time they serve, but if you're talking about, like, HPC members or Parks and Rec members, shouldn't basically there be some sort of criteria that says they served ten-plus years, or something like that? Because we don't wanna put one up if they served half a year.
Yeah.
So there needs to be some criteria that, since those are not elected officials, there needs to be a criteria identifying the others as to why we are putting something up for.
Yeah, they devoted, they devoted ten-plus years and did this for the city. Were responsible for coordinating X, Y and Z, whatever we wanna put in there.
I guess we'll have to pick up to the council if their accomplishments are worthy of.
Of putting the name on the plaque.
Yeah.
Well, I quite agree with you. This is something that could be discussed, and I think could be discussed at, at the committee level. We have a meeting of the administrative committee, and we come back with a recommendation on the number of years that, you know, we feel they need to be acknowledged. And then the third resolution that I, you know, presented to the city council.
Okay, hold on, let's, let's do it one at a time. So, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't know that it needs to go to the committee. You basically have your administrative committee sitting right here. So, so I think, I think what needs to be decided is, and it's purely for the, the, you know, non-elected officials, it, to me, it's a pretty simple thing. It's minimum of X number of years of service.
One term, after you play one term, at, at least.
Whatever it is.
I mean, that's what I would say.
I'm just saying some sort of criteria.
But how long is one term?
Two years.
That's what I'm saying.
So you have to at least, you know, accomplish within two years.
A full term.
Yes. I mean, that should be, you know, you can get a lot done in two years, so if you're on there for two years, and you've done something that needs to be recognized, it should be go forward to council, and if it's worthy, then we can.
What if you did two years and you didn't do it?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Are we gonna vote on, in here, so, like, if they served on the committee or the board for two years, for a full term, we'll say full term, maybe the terms tax, a full term, and they did not accomplish anything, is the council gonna vote on whether or not they go on the plaque? Or are we just gonna suggest after the terms are over, these people need to be recognized?
I think everybody should be, like, nominated and they should come do four-ups.
You're just talking about if they pass away, though, after they pass away.
Yeah.
If they served a full term and it comes before the council, then they will research and go back and decide if there was a contribu-, uh.
Yes.
Noteworthy contribution, I was trying to correct word, but that they want to add them to the plaque, is that how you're thinking about it?
That sounds reasonable, and when we become, when we vote, we can put that in, include that in the vote, provided that they served this.
Okay, so, so why don't we, so is the, is the, is the proposal, we're not voting tonight, but we need to make a change that for non-elected officials who are holders of, you know, the various committees or groups.
Forms.
I mean, are you, are you positive you want one term, one full term, or do you want two full terms?
I mean, one full term, a lot can be done in two years.
Okay. And then, and then it's, then it's an arbitrary decision of whoever the council is to determine that person did something.
Yeah, if they're eligible or not.
Okay.
That works.
And it needs to be some kind of like form or something that, like, they fill out. They, you know, here, I don't have, like, a.
Yeah, so we're not gonna have.
Not him, the council.
Like, I'm not nominating them, you know.
Okay.
The council says this person was significant and we wanna recognize them. They fill out the form and say it falls with this resolution and we wanna vote them.
All right. Is that acceptable to Barry?
That sounds reasonable.
Okay, could you take that back and write that in and give it back to us? Or would you like for us to write it in?
I think it, you're talking about redoing the, the resolution? Or just put it in the motion?
Add that verbiage.
Adding that verbiage.
In resolution. I'll pass, that, that, that could be easily done.
Okay, all right. All right, the next one, discussion on resolution number twenty twenty-three twenty-seven establishing the city council policy for recognizing appointed volunteers in service to the city of Granville. Ms. Barry.
Okay, this one is, is presented to, as a appreciation for contributions to benefit the community and volunteers being recognized annually. In other words, we have an annual event, and at that event, it could start out with maybe training for some of the volunteers that, that are new, and then at the end of it, have an awards ceremony to, to recognize them, either give them a certificate or something to, to acknowledge them. And, and then we do this annually. Most cities do have some sort of annual to recognize volunteers, and we don't do that. I was thinking that we need to let the volunteers know that we do appreciate them, that we could not, they save us a lot of money with their volunteer hours, and we probably couldn't even operate without the service of volunteers. So this, this resolution would just establish that policy. Annual training and awards ceremony. Recommended.
So the only problem, if there's a standalone ceremony, I mean, it would be fine if they just show up, here's a ceremony. It does become a public meeting, so no food will be served, no beverage will be served, no nothing, but we'll end up feeding all of them, so.
You'd have to do, I mean, if you were to, like, do something like that, you could make it to our, every annual Christmas event, you know, but just show up and get a certificate for their contribution for that year.
You could do it with the Christmas.
Yeah, no problem, just add it to that, and there you go. Annual for a year.
Okay.
You know? If they wanna show up in December and get.
But I mean, that would recognize, we're not gonna get any training up there, but I'm saying that would.
I'm more about training, I would, I'm more about recognition. If you want recognition for what you do for the city, show up at the Christmas event and you'll get your certificate handed to you in person, something like, get up there and give them out, council member, the mayor.
And, and Mr. Mayor Proctor can get up there and call out their names on the.
Let me ask one question. Is, is this for all members of all commissions?
We don't have that many.
Well, I know, I was asking, 'cause you were talking Parks and Rec.
You gotta do a lot, you gotta do one.
You're doing Parks and Rec, you're doing HPC, and then.
Cemetery.
No, cemetery's not, it's not.
No, it's not.
And then planning is other.
So it's what, like fifteen people?
No, that's five people.
I'm talking about all five.
All.
Oh, total, fifteen people, right.
There are some people in the cemetery trust.
But it's not the same as, it's not the same as our.
The volunteers.
Volunteers.
I don't, we don't, I mean, I mean, anybody that the council appoints.
Council.
There are people that work in the animal shelter.
Well, that's true.
As volunteers.
You're right.
There are, there's a young lady who waters the flowers, that's a volunteer. I mean.
You got three specific?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if we're just wanna do the, city, city, a council appointed.
And are we, again, putting terms on this? 'Cause, I mean, right now, we've probably had, in some of these committees, four people in turnover constant, and some of them are still just starting, so is there criteria?
Yeah, that's the challenge with all these resolutions. They are wonderful thoughts, but you need specific criteria so you don't discriminate against anyone.
Correct.
That's what, I mean, I would just, I'll hear my suggestion, I would just say if, if the council appoints them, that's who we're, you know, talking about here, you know.
But you got a full, full year?
Full year.
Or, or just a full term?
Full year, I was, well, we could do a full term if you wanted to. Let's just say full term, do a full term on the HPC, and you get a certificate, I think, in that for your accomplishment, so, you know.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, yes. And it's done at the Christmas event, and that way there ain't have to be so many other, you know, meetings done, there's one thing, take care of all, kinda deal. I don't know, that's just my opinion.
So I think if I was gonna do this, I, I would agree that it should be for those appointed ones, a full term. But then there are those, like Mr. Grishaver said, that we have volunteers who really give up their time for other things, that I think should be in quote, "consideration" for this, and that this list should be made into a list, and in the appropriate, I guess it's gonna be November, then it goes on a work session, and then it's approved by person, or if someone says, no, they haven't been here, then that's the final list and then it goes.
Then it gets announced at the.
Correct.
Christmas event.
Correct, that way everybody gets very pregnant, you know.
What Christmas event are we talking about?
Parade.
Parade, tree lighting, tree lighting.
Tree lighting.
Ladies and gentlemen, I don't think you can get it done this year by December the second.
No, won't be this year. It'll be next year.
It'll be next year.
Bless you, my children.
Not gonna happen this year.
I'm going to serve a full period.
But like, for the ones Mr. Grishaver was mentioning, so we can have a list that says, okay.
Yeah, we could do like appointed, then we could do like honorary mentions.
John, Sue and Billy all volunteered at the animal shelter for the whole year, this is their time.
Honorable mentions, also, yeah, you know what I mean, you know, and then we could approve them, like, real quick, I don't know.
That way everybody gets recognized and thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll add the verbiage to this on that, all right? All right, next item.
That's the way to see the agenda.
One more. Discussion on scheduling an administrative committee meeting on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
You just had your administrative committee meeting, talking about criteria. I mean, what else do you want? Madam Chairman?
Okay, this particular meeting was to, I scheduled this meeting from November the twenty-ninth, and I'm not sure if our two committee members are gonna be able to attend, but would like to know if that would be convenient, the twenty-ninth. And two items on the proposed agenda is to review the contracts of council appointments there, and the second item would be to discuss the loyalty of the office, code of ethics and conflicts of interest. So those were the two items that I'm proposing for that, this would be a special meeting of the administrative committee. And we used to be able to meet monthly, but that was changed and to require that we come back to the city council and ask permission to have a meeting, so that's what I'm doing.
Mr. Mayor, can you tell me how many contracts we have? We have one, we have one contract.
And that's for who?
The city manager.
The city manager.
And didn't we already discuss this contract like a month ago?
True. We'll have a discussion.
Ms. Barry, on the second item, are you referring to anything specific? I know this is just your proposed, and you got some information from the clerk previously on oath of offices that were signed and all that, so are we looking at something specific that we need to?
Well, according to our charter, oath of office is supposed to be taken by, subscribed to by all appointed officials, and I was just surprised, the only one I got back was the oath of office for the chief, chief of police. I didn't get one for the city manager, I didn't get one for the city clerk, I didn't get one for the city. I didn't get one for the city manager, I didn't get one for the city clerk, I didn't get one for the city attorney. So these are council-appointed officers that have not subscribed, have not sworn that they will support the Constitution and obey the laws of the United States and observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the city. So I really do need to know if the city of Grantville is following our charter. And I guess that's a question for the city attorney, whether or not there's even a description of who the officers that should be subscribing to the oath, even to the point of board members. So.
Who does follow that?
Who falls under that provision? Mr. City Attorney?
Not sure if that term.
So currently, I think the oath of office is out of council, Mayor.
I have to do some research.
Is that, is that the police chief taking that?
Yeah, I got three from the police chief.
This is one police officer.
I had to take oath of office in Grantville or whatever.
The section of the charter that she's referring to is section three point oh-nine. Says before a person takes any office in the city government, he should take, subscribe to, and file the city clerk following oath or affirmation. That's, that oath is set out there. The term office isn't defined in the charter. It's certainly never come up as an issue before, I don't think there's any. Certainly, the members of the council, uh, this is the oath that is given to them before taking office. I don't think there's any, quote-unquote, violation of the charter that's occurred. But the council feels it's important to have those on file, and certainly that's something to be addressed.
You have yours?
Okay, there's a defin- definition in, uh, in the charter one point oh-two, where there's a definition of officer. Do you feel that that would apply? It says the mayor, councilmember, councilman, members of boards and commissions, and any other person classified as public officers by the laws and jurisdictions of the state. And then you go to the state, to the state code, and you have.
Okay, let, let, let's take this one back on research. The point is to vote next session to have the administrative committee to begin, so. We'll look into that a little more. All right. Announcements.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. City Hall will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, for Thanksgiving holiday, Monday, December twenty-fifth, and Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, for the Christmas holidays. And then again, City Hall will be closed on Monday, January the first, twenty-twenty-four, for the New Year's holiday. That's our holiday schedule.
Okay. Citizens' comments. Now, Mr. Pickren, you are required to give your full name and address. That is the raw rules of our council.
I'll provide you my last name, but my address.
Russell Pickren, he lives in La Grange, he's in Troup County. You may approach.
What's time limit?
Three minutes.
Three minutes? How's everybody doing, uh, this evening? Ms. Berry brought up a good point about the city charter, about, uh, a clerk of, the city clerk of, should have a oath of office. I know everyone, I pull, I get back an oath of office. Anyways, um, she also brought up another good point about social media, Facebook, and YouTube. Comments have been turned off. Why? Because the people can't comment? Why can't the people comment? You don't like what they have to say, so you delete the posts? And I think we've already addressed this issue with an intent to suit, and we've had this issue in the past with Mr. Clark. So if that's the information you're getting from, uh, Mr. Mitchell here, the city attorney, y'all might want your money back. Because the people have a right to say what they want, when they wanna say it, on a government Facebook page. Censoring and deleting comments will stop, and it will stop right now. I hope I made myself clear on that. Censoring public records. City manager Alex Rees-Saber has admitted to altering these records in a past recording.
All, all comments are delivered to the council.
Sir, this is my three minutes, can you stop the time?
That's our rules.
No, I don't care about your rules, I care about the, no, sir.
You cannot mention them in your miss-, in your points.
Sir, I will say what I want, when I wanna say it.
Those are the rules.
I don't care about your rules, I care about the law. You're gonna be quiet for three minutes and not say another word.
Your time is running.
You understand? Quit interrupting me. Mr. Greesaver admitted to altering public records in a previous recording. Also caught by the Department of Justice for trying to suppress the black vote in Albany, Georgia, as well as the financial issues in Florida. And then I hear that the city's out of budget, over budget, or something here as well. You see that track record, you see that same track record. Also, something that happened in the past, something I found on Facebook, again, the public Facebook government page, that Mayor Proctor references himself as the Great White Hunter. The Great White Hunter strikes again down in Alabama with the boys. What is that in reference to? Did you strike again when you pointed at Ms. Berry in the previous meeting, telling her to be quiet because she's questioning? Because she wants the best for the people because she's asking questions? Something that some of the others aren't up here doing, especially?
Okay.
Thank you. Don't interrupt me next time, I'm telling you. So just to clarify, commenting on the YouTube channel of the city council meetings, that's a YouTube policy. It's made for kids.
What now?
They're not allowed to have comments.
What, what did you say?
You can, you can tell YouTube to change their rules.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Berry.
My, my, my name is Salma Cody, I live at two fourteen West Grantlawn Road, Grantlawn, Georgia. And my comment is in reference to a public hearing that was held, believe on November seventh, where there was only one member of the city council present. And that city councilman was directed to leave the council chamber, uh, table, and to go down and sit in a public. Her husband then inquired of the general counsel of the Department of Revenue, Georgia Department of Revenue, was that legal? And they said no. I subsequently got in touch with the Kelly County Tax Assessor, and, uh, he said that he had been notified by the DOR that this had happened, and that there was no legal process to collect the taxes beyond the rollback. That's the problem. And the cost to not do that was going to be between seven and ten thousand dollars. And he made a suggestion, which was for the city to issue a statement explaining the oversight and, I have a hard time reading here, explaining the oversight ensured that they would fo-, are in full compliance with the advertising requirements while redoing the process. So my question to you, Mr. Mayor, is, is the city, or have you already issued a statement? I'll take that as a no.
All right, seeing as how the business of the evening is done, we partake, sure.